I'd like to call the November, my gosh, it's November already. The November 6th, 2018 workshop, the College Place City Council to order. Since this is a workshop, no decisions will be made this evening. This is for information for the city council. With that, we stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, would you lead our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could stand for a moment, reflection of the solemnity of the duties we perform Thank you all. First on the agenda, is Kenny gonna?
He's not making any remarks.
Okay, that's perfect. Mr. Anderson, thank you for coming all the way to one of the cities in the state on the two-lane roads to one of the counties without a stop.
That's what it says on the brochure.
Thank you for asking. That's not my experience of coming here. Beautiful sunny day, and once you get over the pass, it's just tremendous to be on the side of the state, so tight traffic and low bald.
Oh, I didn't mean it to be nighted at all.
So, I am Ryan Anderson. I am, I think of myself as your city lobbyist. Technically, I'm the lobbyist hired by the local coalition government, which you are hard up to work on your shared issues and things that can come together on. This is roughly my year anniversary. I think my end contract is December of last year, so, and I think my second time in front of this council, in front of this workshop, maybe third, who knows? So, thank you for the opportunity. I want to spend a little time talking about what I expect to see tonight, and hopefully I'll amaze you with my ability to say absolutely nothing that you can pin me down on because it's going to be long at eight o'clock, and I like to push the first batch results that get in, and then talk specifically more about how that flows to legislative session, what I think some of the big issues in the world here are going to be. And then, and then we've got working with the government, with the county manager. We've worked very put, first draft draft isn't fair, but a worked-on draft of your legislature's agenda, and we've got a chance to look at it for the first time, all the pieces together, I think. And what I would just want to say is, I don't know, your protocol is within his board, but I encourage you, Mr. Mayor, to feel free to interrupt me at any point and have questions to follow, so that's not a lot, okay?
We've, we've never been shy about interrupting.
Well, you know, I do my best to put things that I think are interesting, but you may want me to move faster, you may want me to move slower, I, you know, you know, so that's why I love having the dialogue more than just me walking through slides. So, with that, I think I just covered, I think I just covered that, that's what we're going to talk about, let's go and talk about that. So, yes, perhaps you are aware, but it is election night, and you are here, and maybe not at a party with some of your friends or something other than a party, depending on how things go. You've got some interesting local elections, perhaps you've noticed, and you, you know, with the loss of Representative Neely, you lost a really respected, seasoned legislator who had the ability to work together in a unique way. His work on the Public Records Act that specifically was a benefit to local governments, in my mind, was something that you won't see from fresh member of the legislature, and that's just the reality. And so, so from, regardless of what happens, you have, right, you have a vacant seat, so obviously you're going to have this one new member of your legislative delegation, and you have another race that I wouldn't call a coin flip, but I don't think it's, I don't think we know for sure. So, we, at the minimum, you'll have one new member, possibly two, and I know that there was concern last year about the health of your senator and how that translates, and I'm not going to speculate that it would be inappropriate, but it's a little period of change, and, and you've had a really good delegation, and you've had a delegation that was able to work within kind of that middle part of the political filter, and it remains to be kind of looks like moving forward. So, I'm uncertain at the local level, from a leadership perspective. The Senate majority leader last year was Sharon Milton, local government background, but from Seattle area, okay? Right now, there is a fight in the Senate between a Seattle Democrat Senator Jane Peterson and a Spokane Democrat Senator Bill. And they're, they're going to figure out who's going to be the majority leader in the Senate now, after all that tonight has sorted, because it's kind of that close, and when we were talking with Mr. Scuttle, I'm like, it might be the difference between if like Pinky Vargas, who's running up in Burndale in the 42nd District, she beats Doug Erickson, who's Republican, Pinky's a vote for Senator Peterson from Seattle. If the 6th District goes to the D, then that's a vote for Bill. I mean, we don't, we don't know, so we don't know really who's the leader, and I think without being just too like, Seattle bad, East Side good, like, I think having someone like Senator Bill from Spokane would be better for the things that everyone in this room generally supports. I think that's, that's kind of an obvious and fair statement, plus we're sick of having people from Seattle be in the front, right? So, okay. So, that's going to be up in the air. I think there's also some general speculation that Speaker Chalk was being like the longest-serving speaker in Washington State history. I think '99 was the year that there was a tie, when there was exactly 49 Republicans, 49 Democrats, that's when Speaker Chalk was co-speaker for ballot. The following year, that tie was broken, so, 20 years to take. There's, you know, I talked a little bit about the belt curve looking like this. I didn't honestly really study it, but we've seen is margins are really close between Democrats and Republicans, but the caucuses are getting further away, though correctly, it's more further left. And there's a lot of people in that House Democratic Caucus that are further left than perhaps historically, there's fewer moderates in that caucus that feel comfortable saying that as a, just a, not as a political comment, but it's as a, what a scientific observation. And that has caused a rift between these figures who's, you know, kind of seen as holding them back. You know, he had a very narrow majority, it's 50-48 going into this election cycle, right? And he's like, whoa, pump the brakes, if we go too far left, like, I'm not going to have, I'm not going to have the majority anymore, but that caucus wants to go further left. If you had, if, I see, I see the D's picking up somewhere in the neighborhood, eight seats, right? You know, we might be, you know, maybe five, maybe eight, somewhere around that. There's, 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 there's virtually, you know, I'm not, there's no, there's no way they're going to lose seats, they're going to pick some up. Eight sounds about right to me, but, but, but I wouldn't put money on that. And then on the Senate side, there seems very little likelihood that there's a path for the Republicans to gain a seat. There, depending on who you talk to, I think the individuals that are the most optimistic from the caucus side would say they might have five. I feel like, I feel like there's three coin flips. I think there's Senator Rocha, a seat that's in my better way, I think that means, it's going to mean pretty, that'd be slightly more than a coin flip to the D. I think Senator Erickson in 42nd is a coin flip, and I think Senator Sheldon, who was technically a D from the Sheldon area, but historically has, for the last couple of his caucus powers, is in a race with a D from the left. I think those are all coin flips. So, I think, I, I wouldn't be surprised if it was three seats picked up by the Ds, but I wouldn't, I would be surprised if it's more. So, that's kind of all the flavor of, and again, what we're seeing is, in these contested areas, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not a moderate D that's poised to win necessarily. It's not like, it's not like we're making the shift where it's just shifting gradually, and I'll use the Senator Erickson versus this council member Vargas race, just because it is such a nice illustration. Senator Erickson has three refineries in his district, has historically been very supportive and helpful of the oil industry. Council member Vargas is a yes vote on the carbon initiative, okay? And so, that's not a moderate D challenging a moderate to a strong R. It's, it's a far-left versus a far-right, and so, it's not incremental or gradual shift. Again, margins stay close, but caucuses are getting more, not ratified, polarized perhaps, is a fair statement. It makes working on things interesting, because you used to be able to just go right through care and say, I'm going to grab everybody in the middle, and I'm going to do what I can to neutralize the people on the far right. Now, it's like, I'm going to work on a bill on drones, and I'm going to grab like the Freedom Caucus and the ACLU, and I'm going to get two-thirds by putting those two people together. And, and it's, right, it's an interesting mix, and it's an interesting, it's a different way to work, and it makes it harder to find that Venn diagram of values, but I like my job, it's always different. Some of the biggest issues in the legislature are just how we continue to deal with some lawsuits. True Blood is the lawsuit that has to do with Eastern State Hospital and Western State Hospital and your criminal justice system. When an individual enters a criminal justice system, including mental health issue, one, how long does it take to get an evaluation? Two, if they're deemed incompetent, how long it takes them to get in the hospital? Three, how long until they're out of the hospital, and then rinse, la, and repeat. Okay. We haven't been able to do any of those things very efficiently, and it's been deemed a human rights violation, a civil rights violation, I should just keep. And so, we've got a federal court monitor, which is one step away from special master, so they don't quite get to tell us how it's better than that yet, but the governor's working on a large package to put in front of the legislature that will have significant budget impacts, significant capital budget impacts. And the idea is basically, you're going to, right now, Eastern State, you have broadly two populations. You have the forensic population, which is the population that gets to Eastern State through the criminal justice system, and then you have the civil population, which gets there through the ITA statute and the, and the behavioral health side of it, right? And so, what they're saying is, we'll keep the criminal, sorry, sorry, we'll keep the forensic portion, and as much as we can, we're going to take all those people that are there in the hospital from, from the mental health side, and we're going to put them in either smaller community facilities, which require them to build these 16-bed facilities across the state, or a true community setting, which is like an adult group home with like intensive case support surrounded, which has implications for local enforcement and, and police response and fire, all that kind of stuff. So, big issue. That's typical of me, I thought of it, but, but we, we made a decision from the state in part, as Parliament McClery fixed, to move all the teachers into a state pension system, so every school district would have the same health benefit, basically. And so, you wouldn't, like, so you wouldn't lose out to a school district that gets to pass the levies and gives someone a better benefit, okay? They, they did a bad job of guessing how much it costs. It's going to cost like another like billion dollars to do that, because, let's say 300 million, 300 million a year. In terms, because apparently, teachers are less attractive from a health purchasing standpoint than just our average state government employee, which surprises me, because I have this notion in my head, teachers are younger and state government folks are old, but I'm just wrong, I'm not an actuary. So, culverts, raving at it, if you heard some others, this needs a lawsuit, that's over, it's okay. That's going to suck up, that's going to suck up travel, right? It just is, we're worried about how it translates or gets translated down to like, you know, goose and gander, what the state is going to expect you to do at the local level, so there's things to worry about that. Okay. Bible and labor, this is code word for, say the, say the House picks up eight seats, say the Senate picks up three or four or five, the base is going to be this session. Last session, when the Ds took control of the Senate, they had a little bit of a wave on like what I would call social justice package, the Health and Rights Act, they did a lot of progressive things around equality parity, wage parity, women, they had what I would say was a social justice package. But they didn't necessarily take care of labor and trial lawyers and tribes and kind of the standard, like traditional political base. I would expect, given this, like, likely be a mandate, and the idea of mandate that the base will be avoided, we were talking about one, one concrete example of this is last year, a bill that narrowly went down last year, narrowly went down, passed the Senate, did not pass the House, because there was an arm of the group, local government-centric legislators that cared about cities and supported cities, was the bill that would expand the wrongful death statute. So, right now, right, in cases of a fault-free plaintiff, you know, if I am an adult of a minor child, so 18 and under, that dies in an accident where dad, you know, my child is free of fault, I'm allowed to receive my pain and suffering, okay? But if they're 19, I'm not. If there's damages to the estate, things like that, okay? But the bill that was proposed last year basically says, kid's a kid no matter how old they are. And I understand, I'm a parent, I don't know, I'm a seven-year-old. They're going to be my children when they're 30, when they're 40, and so I get that from an empathetic level. I just, we also live in a world where there's children in several, complete waiver of sovereign immunity, all these other things that kind of stack the deck against government that don't necessarily exist in other states, so that's one that, you know, it's just one of those things where that's an example of, that bill's going to pass next year. I put my whole formal on tape on it, and let it ride.
I have a question on the culverts.
Yes.
Is there a tying with the culverts and the stormwater, I know this is all, this is looming issues, but there is a, is there not a tie in between the like, our exposure on stormwater and this?
There definitely could be, right now, from a culvert standpoint, it's mainly targeted at the Washington State Department of Transportation and counties. However, in working in similar issues, it rolls downhill, and I can definitely say that it's only in the other type of, yeah.
And it could cut either way, there could be additional funding to help, perhaps, or there could be additional responsibility at the local level, I may be a little optimistic.
I would hope, but we're going to have to aggressively lobby for that, so that way it doesn't become an elder unfunded mandate.
I think, and this is a fine time to talk about it, it was going to come up in other slides, so, there will, there, there will be a big push on having some sort of way to support improvement of culverts, replacement of culverts for fish passage on a basin-by-basin kind of concept. And so, whether you think about that as being a transportation package or a capital budget package, I, I think of it as just, we're going to have to find some revenue to pay for some bonds to fix these things. There, there, that will happen, that conversation, you know, and it's always, you never know exactly at the end of the day what comes out of it, but it's seen as a self-contained, probably pretty large piece of fiscal policy that needs to be addressed. The stormwater piece is, even that makes broadly, but is envisioned probably through a more traditional public works assistance accounts, or how do you grab the, how do you grab the, forgive me if you're not familiar, but so, you know, a couple of years ago, the state decided to take the revenue inputs that come from the real estate excise tax to fund the public works assistance account, and direct that to the general fund, because they felt like they needed it, and slowly been getting that back. And the conversation this year is again, like, you know, as you see on this slide, the general fund is really healthy, right? So, there's just not a policy argument to continue to like, take money from local assets and jumping into the general fund. So, so that's where I see the stormwater conversation specifically. We saw the mock could kind of get, oh, sorry, the Model Toxic Control Act kind of get fixed. Last year, it did 25 million for stormwater, I can see another $50 million stormwater package coming out of the public works assistance account, that kind of scale, but it's not enough. That's like one project in one county, depending on what DOE wants from us, but, but that's, that's the scale I'm seeing, so.
Yeah, there's a few more.
Getting your own business, your own business, like, most easy, right?
Yeah, that's with me.
It's good, county's good.
Yeah.
Like, I'm trying to put you on the spot, like, maybe you've noticed, like, county's good, your contractors are doing well, your home starts are well, your sales tax, what do we say, a couple hundred thousand over estimate this year? You know, like, um, yeah, it's pretty good for the state, too. So, like, I just, look at it, look at that. You know, I'm no mathematician, but 5 million on a $45 million base, that's over 10% for two years, so over 5% or 5% compounded, and it's been that way since 2009, right? The general fund has just been growing by a little bit. And, you know, like, could you manage your household budget, or the city budget, if you were told you were going to go up 5% every year, probably? I, I, so, so I've heard a lot of conversation about, like, we have this looming crisis, we've got this True Blood issue, we've got this teacher issue, we've got this, we're $2 billion in the hole, and I'm like, I don't believe it. Like, I, I don't believe it. And the reality is, is the forecaster does this, the forecast, I'm sorry, the forecaster says, the economy's doing this, even though he knows it's doing this, or some version or it's technically like, it's forecasting this curve that's bending down slow, you know, like, it's actually bending down slow. Because the forecaster gets to keep his job, as the forecaster gives the legislature money each quarter, you know, and he's done it like, pick a number, it's like 40 quarters in a row, the revenue has like gone up, it's been something, or we haven't had a recession since in over 10 years. So, so, and he picks a conservative forecast, and so, the forecast is conservative, but the budget's really going to sustain, because we haven't had, we haven't had, we haven't had a downturn in the last 10 years. So, so, we've got to have a downturn, and as soon as that downturn happens, and as soon as you don't, you know, you've got, you've got a bunch of legislators that have just gotten really used to spending money, and I don't mean that, but originally, I mean, that's just what their job has been, they haven't, they had some challenges around McClery and had some choices to make, but they didn't have to do the same job with the legislature that was in place in '09, '10, and '11, and '12, had to do. So, this budget isn't really sustainable, so, so that, I don't know when it's going to happen, but at some point, we're going to have to make some different choices. All right. We have a budget function of, of operating budget. Interest rates are going up, so there's, it's a little bit tighter to do some of the things we want to do in our community. We're competing against these things, people have been passing budgets crazy, that competes against, kind of looking for many interests, culverts, True Bloods, going on, so. So, that's kind of, I'm going to take a breath. So, that's kind of the contextual pieces that I wanted to provide in terms of, what are some of the big things, what's the physical situation, and what's the politics versus policies? There any, before we get moving to the agenda specifically, is there any questions? You get a chance to, I'll say this. All right, not everybody wants. Okay. I haven't promised that you have a one sheet that has your legislative, like, the, all the legislative, and, and, yes. It's, it's Mike, so when he says it's there, it's there, you know?
So, one title, state law, just a little bit down.
All these items are on there, mostly in the same order, there's a couple of things that were, are aligned a little bit differently, but, so these are the things that are being put in front of you as, as the most, most critical things for really us to work as a team up in front of the legislature's looking. In my, in my, I don't want to, I'll step on the ground, yes.
Do you mean serve the residents of the town?
No, I believe so, I don't know, it might be severe, so, yes, thank you. So, wastewater treatment plant, this is primarily land acquisition, this is a big number, and it's, but it kind of depends on whether the state agency wants to play ball or not, whether this number is the right number. That could go up significantly. Wastewater trunk line, to sever off the, no, to save the residents. So, there's two pieces of this. I think perhaps you're aware, but guys, when you annex the area, you annex fairly significant amount of land, there's also a parks component then, that kind of comes into play when you bring a park into your city. So, you've got both the utility component to service and service growth, and then you also have that park component. So, those were the two pieces of that ask. What did we say, a 5 to 10 acre park, or something like that?
Yeah, and the idea of going to ask what the legislature is, if it was just a basic park, that would be a developer issue, and they'll need to contribute appropriately for that, but we've been talking with the public school district about doing a more regional facility, so that way tournaments could be hosted, and it'd be right across from the high schools, so when you're going to add stuff like that, then it becomes a component of some additional monies in place.
And we're going to, as we, I don't know if it's the very end slide, but it's coming up shortly, we're going to be talking a little bit about like revenue capture tools that, that like capturing the increase in property tax base, or capturing future sales tax. You might be familiar with some of these, because, you know, if you follow the highway down to Long Water Bay, Oregon has all of them. So, and so, so keep in your mind that when you talk about giving assistance from the state from wastewater, it doesn't have to answer for the, for the trunk, it doesn't necessarily have to be just like cash from the program, there are, we want the local tools to be able to finance these ourselves, to figure out how to do, so. So, I think you've covered this issue quite a bit, not half, but a big chunk of that is just from the pond separation.
So, I came out a little bit to that lines part that's gone through council several times. 1.3 million amounts to improve in the park, I think there's a good chance we'll get a recreation conservation grant for that portion, however, there's 700,000 above that for the whole pond separation debacle, because there isn't a lot of cities that have something like that.
You're a pioneer in this area.
So, so that, that is the element where we'll be looking for legislative appropriation or additional stormwater monies, or something to make that a reality.
I think we're all well versed on the 12, C3 corridor, you do have the grant request in front of the TIP, the transportation improvement award, thank you, you have excellent staff. You'll find out next week, probably. So, we'll probably find out next week. This guy, by the way, I know, I've kind of, he is, I have a, I used to work for the Washington State Association of Engineers for many years, I've worked with agencies, I've been running agencies. But this guy is But this guy is so well, like, like, so he knows actually, and he knows the offensive, and he knows KI, like, he has personal relationships with all of these people that are in charge of, it's like, working on the grant funding and getting, and, and, I mean, the amount of resources that this individual brings into this community based on the special that he cultivates and the expertise that he has and how well respected he is. At this, at this level, right, like, deep within the bureaucracy, it's incredible. And I don't know, I don't, I, it's, I've worked with a few other city managers and it's just, it's really amazing. So, um, I suspect you know that, though.
Yep.
So we've, we've already covered a lot of this ground, but, so, um, Public Works Assistance Account, okay? It has loan repayments that come back in, okay? But we were able, from a policy standpoint, to get that back in. We got a loan list funded last week for the first time in a couple of years. We got a hundred million dollars worth of projects. Okay, the hope is then to grab that revenue stream from real estate excess tax week, uh, week, uh, week two. You wanted to, don't bother on that. But, um, there's gonna be a whole, whole bunch of people swimming in that water and thinking about it. And I had conversations with the Capitol Budget Chair from the House side, who has a port that has a stormwater issue, that he wants like some, you know, some, some help to, at opening up a small part of this. Anyhow, we'll have all sorts of conversations about if you bring the revenue back, what do you use it for? Does it get used for traditional stuff? Do you bring the ports into it? Do you bring an affordable housing component into it? How do you deal with that? So there's gonna be a lot of conversation about that. And, um, the pie will probably get not, might get a little bit bigger, but there might be more people taking slices out of it. So, um, we're gonna try to make sure that overall cities benefit from that pie being bigger and our slice of growth. This is what we talked about just a second ago in the context of the trunk line. There's not enough money to go around to finance, or the state to just pay the wastewater treatment plant you need, the wastewater treatment plant that the relate needs, the wastewater, like, like, and, and the infrastructure needs at the local level. Going on just like, how do we, it's, it's, how do you give us the ability to do this? And kind of those most common ideas, uh, they have funky names, LRF, LIF, and they, and there are always to get around the idea that at one point, taxing from a finance was, was considered unconstitutional in Washington state. So we've, we've kind of just rebranded them differently. But it's the notion that when you put the infrastructure in place, history has proven out time to time again that you will get the economic growth that comes from having the infrastructure in place. So you can bond against future revenue growth, whether it's on the sales tax side or attention, whether it's on the property side. And that's really what we're talking about, is how do you give us, you, the tools to invest in infrastructure in a way that you know it needs to be done and to get the results you want? Yes.
You know, when it comes to wastewater, we've talked about this several times, um, this, this group. And I think the last conversation was around, um, we have cities our size, but then you have cities, as you just pointed out, that are much smaller than us that are struggling with this. And it came down to my question, I think some of the questions were also a statewide end compliance with some of these wastewater issues because it's not affordable. And it's not fundable. And so.
No, I, 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 I'm, the conversation, so, um, you know, I was sitting down with the chair of the Capitol, the House Capitol Budget. And he's like, well, what about the, the Public Works Assistance Account? And I said, well, a low income loan still needs to be paid back. And quite frankly, we can, we have access to capital. It's good, but it's not amazing. And it's like, I mean, what, but, if you have, if you have to build twenty-five to thirty-five million dollars, the impact on your rate payer, you know, your impact fees go from twenty-five thousand to forty thousand overnight, you know? I, it was fun being a council member, right? Right, have fun with that, bro. And so it's, and, and I mean, and I mean, glib on the political side of it, but just, that's just, I mean, you're right. See, you know, a city approaching ten thousand can't really, doesn't have the resources to do that. And quite frankly, neither does a city of fifty thousand and neither does a city of five or twenty-five hundred. It's just not practicable to keep going, so, all right. So we've typed, we've hit that, tools to support housing prices. That's, um, we've talked about the resource side, that's how we create a, a market that incentivizes, um, the development of affordable housing, whether it's through multifamily or property tax exemption for everybody, or whether it's other things that allow for, um, the development of, uh, you know, missing metal cottage houses, things that just don't exist, cheaper condos, um. Good luck bill. Looking for greater flexibility, especially if we have experience with the contract. This is really going at the DOE issue. And so, how do I not make my twenty-five, twenty-six million dollar wastewater treatment plan go to fifty? So, that's what that's about. You know, one percent problem. NRC is, is funded from monies that are technically local monies and happen for all this time. They keep trying to do shovels, it's from, it's from their profits. So, um, defend local control. I know this is issued locally, and as always, do I defend against anybody mandated? And then the last slide I wanted to bring up in front of you is, um. You have some vacancies, you currently have one officer who's away from training. This is kind of continuing issue that we don't have a robust way to forecast the need. And we don't just build it into like a retirement, and so for a long time, we beg for more classes, it doesn't make sense. Growing issues here, both on the, on the behavioral health side, whether it's mental health side or the chemical, the SUD side. So, how do we have some additional support of the state to help our communities around downtown? That's what I got for you.
Questions?
I would just say the, probably the most significant of all this is what, is two things, where wastewater treatment plan either back off on being crazy with these own risk regulations or give us money. That's the basic message on that. And then with the, uh, development to the southwest, they have a trunk line with that LIF-LRF program. We have a big potential to get a lot of that money back, uh, through basically a state sales tax for them. Because of South Ridge Development in Kinoak, that was all done through LRF. Uh, except unfortunately, they put a closure on that program and they died in the middle of the recession. But now Kinoak wants to do this to the field, and there's a lot of other developments. So if we get that, that's gonna be a major payout, so, yeah.
Thank you very much. Ms. Selby?
Uh, just to comment on the wastewater issue. Ecology has some tools that they can use to be, you know, less stringent, but the real requirements come from the feds. And so, at some point, we're probably gonna need to get our congressional delegation involved.
And that, and that language is in the, there's a federal legislative agenda in this, so it's in there as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon. Stormwater master plan.
Well, thank you, Mayor. We want to thank Angela Taylor for coming back to join us to give us an update on our stormwater, uh, planning effort. Angela, again, is with Parametrics, and she is the lead on putting together our stormwater plan. We really have two objectives tonight. One is to review that plan before you, and Angela will touch on that. And then what I'm gonna do after that is I have a short presentation, just going through some of the code that we'll be looking and bringing before you for approval as we move down that, that path towards finally implementing the plan and getting our utility up to speed. So with that, Angela, it's all yours.
All right, so I'm Angela Taylor. It's good to see you all here again. I feel like I'm right at home, that's why I'm ordering city staff tonight. So I'm just gonna be going over our draft stormwater management plan. Uh, this is just a view of the table of contents thus far, and I've included, um, just percent complete as I feel they are now because we have had additional scope, we're working on it right now to add some of that information. So what you have in front of you, exhibit one, is not a hundred percent, thank you. But we want to keep the process moving and allow you to do a cursory review, maybe, um, try and as necessary with some of the things that we've talked about. Um, and then this is just a list of the different facilities. And there again, I show approximate, um, completion. Um, one of the biggest steps that we've taken is updating the GIS mapping. This is been the most effort so far, just to get our heads around what the city has, um, some of the drainage characteristics, the soils. So we've been working on GIS mapping. As you are aware, Garrison Creek comes through, there's Lions Park right there, um, and then comes down to your wastewater treatment plant. Thompson Creek comes into that, and then you have Stone Creek to the south. There's also the Burlingame pipe, I don't show it on here, but that's underground. Thompson Creek is mostly underground, but it manders through private property and whatnot. So, um, just a note, chapter one, if you're looking in your manual or your draft plan, that's where that will be and reference that. So this is some of the GIS mapping that we've been working on, uh, just a, a list. We've gone quite a ways with our stormwater infrastructure mapping. When we move more, we updated scope to get actual renovations, invert elevations, and pipe sizing type, so that you have a more complete picture of what we've got. Visited all of the outfalls with Paul, thank you, Paul, and I've taken pictures of ninety percent of them now, so. And then land use, most of that came from your GIS from Walloa County. So we've just been updating that as necessary. Soil type is really USDA NRC soil mapping, so we just brought that in. Um, we will be working on illicit connections, um, and I'll be working with your facility staff to maybe identify some before we go visit, see if there isn't, you know, we'll, we'll come up with that plan as we move forward. So this just shows you what GIS mapping we've been working on. Again, you can't see this very well, but everything in red is your facilities now, some of them are private, but it shows you all of the piping that's in the ground, has basins, manholes. Again, chapter two and eight, if you want to refer back to the plan. Uh, these are all of your outfalls. So all the triangles are outfalls. And then the pink areas are infiltration basins, um, mostly the infiltration ponds or facilities like that. This, and I apologize, this is a lot of information. These are just the drainage basins. So in orange, you have everything that's going into the Thompson Creek basin. You will be developing additional sub-basins based on where your stormlines are going. The darker red is your upper Garrison Creek, and the purple over to the west is your lower Garrison Creek. So again, refer back to your plan and you'll have to fill out information. And then soil mapping. One thing that we will be updating here is the hydrologic soil groups. Soil will be working it out into A, B, C, and D. So that relates back to your infiltration capacity, whether or not you can do an infiltration stormwater drainage or you have to do retention treatment and other stuff. And then this is the impervious area mapping that we completed. Uh, this was critical for developing the rates because you needed to have a baseline of what impervious areas you do have with the city lines. Uh, these are the billing rates. You know, we had two workshops, we did two presentations at the city council, this is what's been improved and then we.
What's impervious meaning, blacktop?
It's root area, it's blacktop, it's, it's compacted ground. Yeah, yeah, it's root area, impervious. So anyway, uh, we came up with an average equivalent service unit of thirty-five hundred square foot of impervious per lot. So anything that's above your single family residential would be multiple that ESU. So commercial development, you would divide thirty-five hundred by your total, and multiply that by ninety-one. So this is just a recap of why we're doing this. It's because of the DOE twenty nineteen, these two MPD ES permit, the National Food, we just started to eliminate the system. Uh, those are the seven steps on the top. And then we've also been tasked with MDL compliance monitoring on Garrison Creek. So they are requiring that you, um, monitor at least two locations and try to come, come up with a plan to limit fecal coliform. So that could be pet waste, you need to find out where it's coming from, so.
Which MDLs are there?
It's just for fecal coliform.
The types of not used to be one?
So as part of the management plan, in chapters three and four, we discuss public education outreach and involvement. I lump these in together because they can include, I mean, to city council meetings, public information flyers you can set up. Um, I know that mine's been involved with radio programming and newspaper releases. So that all ties into how you're relating, how you're getting this information out there. Making that, they need to protect stormwater. Um, targeting businesses, that would be just going to like the automotive facility and saying, hey, you have these chemicals, this is what you can do, your secondary containment. A lot of these businesses are probably already doing that, but just you document it. You know, it's a more formal approach, which probably already been, or not. That just kind of gives you an idea. This is a public information handout that we've developed. As you can see, that's Lions Park. There's a lot of valuable growth there. Um, so, you know, we talked about lawn care, what you can do to pick up after your pet. I don't know if you have a pet we sorted this? So that could be something, you know, you have to pick up after your pet. And provide, you know, the doggy. Boots, edge of parks, and lawn trails and whatnot. Motor vehicle care, so that's the first page of it. And then the second page where you can go to get information, why we're doing this. So those are some things that we can hand out to the city. I know you already did one, Mayor, that was very informative. So you can continue to just do a word in your utility.
Yeah, actually, Robert did it, and I took credit for it, but.
Yeah, I liked the humor that was in there.
We've been running words in the utility newsletter and social media, I'm all close.
Right. And farmer's market, I mean, I came to one, but then you guys continued to have those, um, the booths and information out there. I didn't have a lot of interest in parties, but I did talk to as many people as I could, and I went up to people and said, here's some candy. So, you know, that's just a way to get me information out there. You can also do public school curriculum. Maybe you have the kids go out and paint, you know, something on the curb line. You go drains to the, you know, the creek or something. Maybe something like that could get everybody involved. So then our next task is illicit discharge and detection. Uh, basically, this would just be a more formalized way to make sure that your staff is trained, make sure that you are looking for these things. I know, and in exhibit three, you actually are developing an ordinance to make specific, um, you're, you're defining it better because it wasn't defined in your state code before. So, uh, recording spells, just record keeping, making sure that you document everything. Maybe there's a public information way to, to document stuff. Do you have a question? Okay, construction stormwater and, um, development stormwater. I think these are intertwined because you can work with your permitting and plan review to make sure that the developers and engineers are following the DOE Stormwater Management Manual for Eastern Washington. That's already in your city code, that they have to follow that. But you can train your staff to know what to look for, to what they're going to train to report, to say, hey, yes, it is meeting the two-year, the ten-year. for, to say, hey, yes, it is meeting the two-year, the 10-year, the 25-year. We have treatment for metals, oil, basic treatment. Construction inspections, this is something that the city of Coleman does. They actually have an extra stormwater permit that is on top of the DOE. It's for smaller sites. But basically, they come onto the site and make sure that you have all of your BMPs in place for even getting your grading permit. And then they have their building inspectors also trained to see. So if they do notice track out or maybe somebody didn't protect a catch basin, they can verify the contract reasons they gave us. This is a deficit. They need to bring this up to speed. So that's a way for you to track both your construction after permits are released and also make sure that the design of those developments are included. Municipal operations, you're already doing a lot of street sweeping, but what we'd like to see is more catch basin clean out, pipe maintenance, just working with the facility staff to maybe train them on not dumping the decant stuff just out on the facility waste or the facility or, you know, maybe having some secondary containment. So we'll work with you to develop a plan to do that. Record keeping, just basically tracking everything that you do so that if you go back and DOE has a question, you can say, well, yes, we did clean those catch basins out on this lake and we've been working through our inventory. So it's just a way for you to back up that you are cleaning, you are tracking your stormwater permits. There we go. Okay, so part of the thing is for TMV, TMVL sampling, total mapping, daily load. These are just some hypothetical locations. I mean, obviously, you want to track to see what's coming into your city. So basically, right at the city limits. So maybe all of the fecal coliform is coming from up here.
Probably.
That would be, that would be a way for you to quickly identify where it's coming from because if you're not gaining any from here down to here, then you know that your background level is higher than what you needed to begin with. So I would recommend upstream of your city limits, maybe downstream. I know you're probably already doing testing downstream of the Weasewater Management Plan so that I could just be adding that to your stormwater reports. And then maybe a couple upstream. I put one at the Lion Pond, a lot of animals, you know, people were walking their dogs. So that would be a way to track if maybe pets are adding to.
We have a lot of geese and ducks.
Yeah, I did see a lot of geese. So that, those are just hypothetical. We can, we can talk about this. It's not written in the document. These are the capital improvements that we already built into the rates. So you have your decant facility, you have your raptor, your street sweeper, your tent street improvements. So these are all things that eventually need to be taken care of. Point source loading, as I've explained before, is just wherever you have an outfall directly into the creek without treatment, without anything, that would be a way to kind of retrofit those areas. So it's really open-ended because as you saw, I'm having to plug through outfalls. A lot of catch basins directly into the creek as the creek goes under.
My perception is that separating the pond at Lions Park will actually have a good effect on the water quality and the, and stormwater. So I'm wondering if, if putting it in this plan as a would like to but can't afford it would help give us a reason to get money for it?
It could. However, it is, let me get back to the map. It is quite a ways upstream.
It is.
So you're really only getting impact from this area in here, whereas you still need to get treatment and detention for all of this in here.
Well, and it's, it's not really going to help for fecal coliform that much, I would say.
Right.
I think, but I think it's going to be a pretty big help for temperature.
And it's not very deep.
It isn't now.
And it's full of algae. So, yeah, part of the plan was to develop a capital improvement plan to help with the rates and then start to get your thinking about what your future improvements would be. Additional tasks that we've talked about is developing a municipal operation maintenance plan, coming up with illicit discharge and detection and elimination plan, and then also doing some preliminary sizing and site evaluation for those regional facilities. And like I said, I would prefer it downstream, but whether or not you have the land will be another. So maybe you could stage it in some of it could be in your Lions Park. And then coming up with street sections that then developers and engineers could use to come up with some street treatment. I think for their impervious with the laws and some of the private stuff, they would still want to do treatment outside of the street section. But this would at least give them an idea of what their section should be and what they can come up with. And it would be dependent on the soil types, infiltration capacity, what type of street they're putting in. So maybe we could help streamline some of that decision-making process. So that's all I had. Tried to keep it brief. We're still working on the plan. It's still in development. We have quite a bit left to add to it.
Ms. Self.
This is the time of year when I start to go slightly nuts when I see all of the piles of leaves in the streets. And I didn't really see where that would, it's not in our brochure.
And we should put that in the operation maintenance plan. We could even include it in that public outreach brochure.
Yeah, because I mean, it's public. It's the public that's doing it.
Right.
So retraining everybody in town that, no, that's not where leaves go is probably a big job, but it seems like that should be an important part of stormwater.
Call this facility, come through and please just the weeds.
So where are we supposed to put them?
Supposed to compost them or send them to the landfill.
Basin disposal.
Bag them.
They get there eventually.
This is the only place I've ever lived where people do that.
Oh, no.
In Walloa, in Troy's News.
Where she's lived, not where you've lived.
I was such a shock when I moved here and saw that.
Yeah, it's weird.
And, and, and since the newspaper put in what a great idea it is to put things in the street.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, didn't you see that was our editorial in the Union Bulletin? How great it is.
It corresponds with when you start to get rain and you will see flooding in the catch basins.
Exactly, Ma. Catch basins are all fog, old leaves. And then next summer, they make great compost because next summer the weeds all start growing out of the catch basin like crazy because they have a lot of good soil that came from the weeds body.
Some leaves don't break down for a year around here.
So I guess as a city, we need to come up with an idea of how that's going to be received by the public and what facilities can do this, you know, not onerous amount.
Well, and I think we also need to talk to our garbage contractor business as well.
I know you mentioned maybe those paper sacks, the big ones, provide those to the people in town that they're using.
So, I mean, there's different things that we can do, but I just think it needs to be a topic of conversation because it's going to make it our, if we're going to get serious about catch basin maintenance, it's going to make catch basin maintenance a whole lot more difficult.
Right. And right now, even if you did have a backer truck, you don't really have anywhere to take your catch basin clean out unless you take it to the landfill. And some of it's considered hazardous waste. And I'm not sure, does your landfill take hazardous waste?
It does, it takes household hazardous waste.
Not, not commercial. Arlington, Oregon, or Roosevelt, Washington.
Anyway, that's all I had if you guys have any more questions. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Angela, appreciate that. This is going to go very quickly, so hang on. The, what I like to do is just address the fact, and in fact, you brought up something that was appropriate, is I missed the pet waste ordinance, okay? But everything else I think I've captured in terms of what you're going to, folks, you're going to have to look at in terms of approving as we go through this process. I just want to touch on that ahead of time. I think it's something that's important to have on, in place before we get to actually charging rates. So let's, with no further ado, I just wanted, this is what we showed at our last meeting, just as a brief review again, and Angela's already touched on the major elements of the plan and the compliance requirements. But I would like to go through and again, I just want to mention the exhibits we're talking about, our draft, we're still working on them. But the, we are looking at some elements in terms of what shows up in our code, like for example, stormwater, stormwater management plan will need to be adopted at some point by you folks. So this is it. We agreed to it. We put our names behind it. We don't have that yet. We do have a draft illicit discharge detection, elimination code that we are working through. And some of the elements there is we're prohibiting everything but stormwater going into the storm drains with a few exceptions. For example, swimming pools and the like and some other things can go in there with some, some care. We're prohibiting illicit discharges and we're complying with any other MPDS permits in the area. We're notifying on spills and then we're enforcing. We start with education and we move towards more egregious forms of enforcement. So that's all there in illicit discharge. That'll be a code that comes before you. We are also looking at construction sites stormwater runoff and post-construction stormwater management. Really what this is, is the before and after of construction. The construction site stormwater runoff portion has to do with what you do when you build it. And then the post-construction is what you put on the site. Okay, so we have two elements here. One is code and one is standards. If we go to the actual code that we're looking at, it requires that compliance with those seven elements, core elements that you saw earlier on the slide and then also that Angela brought up. And it also provides for design standards and processes. It codifies professional engineering design and facility certifications and requires record drawings. What that means is when we do a stormwater design, we have a professional engineer certify. Then when we build it, we have them come back and certify again and say it was done right. Okay? What that does is that puts the onus on that professional engineer to make sure they get it done right. We do take a 30,000-foot view of it, make sure things are correct, but we really do rely on their professional engineering expertise. We provide for protection of facilities and water courses and require reporting of spills. This code also clarifies who owns the facilities and responsibility for maintenance of those facilities. And then provides for dedication of private facilities to the city. There's also the stormwater specifications and standards. And you folks have already approved our current standards, but we would be modifying these a little bit. What we're doing is we're moving away from putting everything on everybody else's property and we're going to placing our facilities on public property. And the reason for that is we're trying to relieve the burden on private residential and commercial interests so that they can just get it to the city. It's not exactly what ecology wants to see. They would like to see dispersed infiltration facilities all over town. This is kind of like that, but it's not quite as dispersed or more original in terms of taking care of a neighborhood or a PUD or an area. So we're looking at putting everything we can in the right of way as opposed to on private property because if we put on private property, we've got to inspect it. If we've got to inspect it, we're going to need a whole lot more people to be doing that every day of the week as opposed to if we keep it in the right of way and we can do it as a part of our regular public works effort. So in general, all private and public areas draining toward the right of way, city property easements shall require public facilities located in city right of way. And others, we're putting everything in the right of way that we can. This won't be case for everybody. Some will have to be on private property. It will not be required for standalone, single-family homes. It will be required as a part of larger developments, subdivisions and so forth. But if you have an isolated home sitting in the middle of town somewhere, we're not going to go in there and make them require them to do a stormwater plan. Okay? Private facilities required on all other lots. So for example, you have a commercial facility, let's say it does have hazardous waste that's involved, they're going to have to have their own specific design associated with their facility. And in that case, it would not be public. Facilities serving areas draining away from the right of way. So for example, if you have part of a lot that drains to a creek, does not drain to our right of way, is not a city facility, not a facility property, we will oversee the development of those facilities, but ultimately those facilities will be private, be responsibility of the property owner. Again, that helps pull us out of the responsibility of being policemen in everybody's backyards, trying to avoid that. Okay, and then we looked at a couple of design possibilities. We're looking at 100-year, 24-hour storm design for public facilities. That 100-year sounds a lot more than 25-year. It's about 11% more water. So it's a little bit more and it gives us a little bit more hedge in terms of showing that we're doing a responsible job protecting downstream folks. Any other facilities going to say the backside of a lot to a stream or something would be a 25-year?
Yes. On the facilities that are owned, rented and located on private property, do we have the authority to require that that be put on the title or that it be notified when property changes names?
Actually, I've seen some of the code, other cities that do do that and we could do that, yes.
I think we should because it's really easy for that to get lost over a few ownership changes.
Correct.
And pretty soon nobody's maintaining it or knows about it or anything.
Yes.
It's covered in black bearers.
And another thing you can do is get an own operation and maintenance manual just for that facility and then have them sign off on it. And there's a statement in there that said it transfers with ownership.
In fact, Angela sent us a copy of one of those management plans that we can use. Again, the intent is if we can, as we back out of that, but you're right.
Well, and if it's, what time is the title or required to be disclosed when it's sold, then the banks are required enforcement rather than you don't have to.
Right, right.
But you still want to certify those as well. So, you know, you sign off on the design and then you get it certified.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right.
I'm just thinking down the road after, after it's all built.
Yeah, that's a good point. So with that said, I think that's it. We just want to kind of give you, again, we don't have the doggy pickup code in here yet, but that may be another one you see, something like that. And there may be a few other elements, but effectively, these are the co-parts of the effort that we're putting out for the stormwater that you should see here in the next couple meetings or so, Mike, once we get them settled down, so.
Questions for Ms. Taylor and Mr. Gordon. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rizzatello, City Insurance Provider Information.
Okay, I'll provide a very brief summary on this. We thought it was a good idea to just look at the other risk management insurance pools out there because from what I can find, last time there wasn't any, also this was in the mid-'80s from what I found. Right now, we use Cities Insurance Association of Washington. The genesis behind this was even though it's a lower rate, my bigger concern concerned department heads is they do provide a very limited spectrum of training and risk reduction grants and it's an issue because talk to a lot of other cities and there's trainings for almost every sort of service you provide. In their case, however, it's basically a deviation of one training and earthquake and flood currently is uncovered by CIAW insurance. I had five department heads in myself rank the proposals and RMSA and WCIA came out pretty near each other's, our current provider was on the bottom. The key reason we bring this before you is because if we were to do a change, we would need to send a notice of termination to our risk management provider. However, before it takes effect, it's actually a full calendar year out. So you go a full calendar year. If you decide to stick with the risk management rule that we're in CIAW, you can still bring back on that termination and go back with them. But it's just we're getting near the point where by the end of November, if we didn't issue that, then it'd be a whole other year out before even considering it again. Some other concerns is that the other pools do give risk management grants, our current one does not. And then the other significant concern is the net position when you look at the audit reforms on these insurance pools. So while CIAW looks like, hey, it's a bargain, look at the net position and it's a little over one and a half million and you have a bunch of little cities in Yakima and on that, and you get one or two lawsuits and that's going to get wiped out and take a guess where the extra money is going to come from. RMSA as well as WCIA, they have a better net. RMSA as well as WCIA, they have a better net position, I will say from a cities perspective, there's many more cities in that WCIA pool. And then for consideration, I emailed several users of WCIA and RMSA, and those emails are attached in this board packet for you all to look at. One question I did look into as far as the wells bending issue, I did look into that. So hypothetically, let's say if the wells were operating and then we had like some sort of earthquake or some substantiated event, and we could prove it, then it actually would be covered.
Wow.
As far as like a fault or something that's existed or something that's just been there, then no, but if it was an actual event, then...
Well, we had a little earthquake here in like the '90s, right, so maybe it was that.
Our conversation is centered around that, because somebody's wells have deteriorated over time, and we're not sure exactly was the seismic, it probably was, but I think our fear is that there is a single, if you're just expressing, a single event, and you lose all wells. Yeah, it can be traced back to that single event, correct, the incident, so yeah.
So I talked to our current provider, they, as I said, as far as going to that level of earthquake, they do not. The other two, RMSA and WCIA, both of them do. There is some level of debate among department heads as far as either RMSA or WCIA, they came out very close. So, I mean, what I would ask of this council, and we can bring this forward to future council meeting, is at least to get that resolution of potential termination out there, and that way over the next year, if you all want to, we, all of these providers, they've actually offered to come here and give a presentation, so you could all see it.
I think that would be good.
Yeah, we're talking about 30,000 more premiums, correct?
Yeah, but then you get grants and more trainings and stuff.
No, 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 I'm saying for that much more money on that base for the extended coverage, it's like, my thoughts on this is to move quickly.
Yeah, well, yeah, unfortunately per the statute of CIAW, we can't move quickly.
But I mean, quick for notification, correct?
Quickly as we can.
Exactly, so it's just notification, and if we find out something you all don't like, we can pull back and just stay where we're at, but it's not like Brexit. Exactly, we do have the ability to fall back and fold this, I'm very concerned with CIAW's net position and the fact that outside of Yakima and Liberty Lake, we are the third biggest city in the CIAW pool.
Wow.
The other people in the pool is Colfax, and I was trying to get out of it when I was there, so.
Ms. Selby.
Well, I guess my comment is, I've never felt like cheap insurance is a good thing. You should choose insurance by what you need more than by the cheapest. So, yes, I agree, that we should get the letter of termination going.
One question I have is, what kind of things have we been using, what sort of claims have we been making for our insurance recently? What are like very observable needs as opposed to potential ones?
I mean, really, it's been like some vehicle claims and very minor stuff like that since I've been here. I know there has been some stuff a couple of years back that I'm still going into, but for at least since I've been here, it's been mainly minor vehicle stuff, so.
But we would take advantage of a lot of the training.
Well, yeah, that's my concern, because Sean has done a great job of trying to get CIAW here to provide trainings, but the frustrating thing, they may call them different titles, but it's gotten to a point where it's like 20 variations of the, or 90% of it's the same thing, and then that juncture, it really becomes, what are we paying for? Yeah.
What kind of things do these trainings cover?
Customer service, harassment, do's and don'ts like that, but it doesn't go into subject-specific stuff, such as like for fire department, police, even planning, land use case law, it doesn't go into any of that, so then we have to find for sources, and that's always been my concern.
Yeah, it's like we have to take training on how to work in a warehouse properly every year.
Yeah.
Or faculty, so.
Well, it feels like that, and then I look at staff, and half the staff, the eyes rolled up like again, so.
Other questions for Mr. Rizzatello?
I think it's good.
Moving along then, library balance.
Okay, this issue is just to bring at least some sort of finality to this. A long while back, there was presentations made by the Rural Library District in Mid-Columbia, because one of the guiding principles behind this is if we were going to look at potentially doing this and putting a vote out to the people, it would need to be some sort of facility and college place, because otherwise, it wouldn't make sense to be paying for someone that's not here, so that's why City of Oahu was excluded. So as far as how we join, it varies, so I mean, either way, it's an election with the Rural Library District, it would be an election mainly to annex into the district, since we are a donut hole in it. With Mid-Columbia Library, it would be basically an election for that special levy and then a contract for library services. And then the levy amounts are pretty close. As far as extent of collection, Mid-Columbia has a very extensive collection there, and then there's also more percentage of budget dedicated to materials at Mid-Columbia. As far as where the various service could be provided, with the Rural Library District, they own it after the oncology avenue, with Mid-Columbia, that would maybe be a discussion, it could be the Lions Club building, but these several things. Inroom locations, with the Rural Library District, it would be plaza ways, the inroom, with Mid-Columbia, they would want to open something up within the city limits. So, yeah, since I've been here, this has been a very semi-contemptious issue, those are against, those are for, hear from both a lot. So the reason we're bringing this up now is because from a property tax standpoint, it is going to dip significantly next year because of that McQuarrie decision. So if, I mean, I would say if the council's looking at all to do this, impulsive, the opportune time would be for next year, and there's a special election, you could do April 23rd, so, or even later on in the year. I think really showing that you are having a property tax dip, that would be the way to sell it, would have to be another group to really advocate for it, though, because this council can't be doing that. And then keep in mind, there is a cost when you run an election, so, and that's why I'm bringing it up now, because if we were to do this sometime next year, I mean, you're talking about roughly 20,000 costs to do it. So I would say read over the table, I'd be very curious as far as what you're all thinking. I just would like to bring some sort of end to this one way or another, so I could relay that appropriately, so.
I think you know my opinion, I'm very much in favor of it, and I think we're going to.
Other questions?
Questions, so, how do we get, I mean, is it really just putting it on the ballot to really get the, to get the temperature, there's no way to gauge it other than?
Well, I mean, technically, we could do another survey, keep in mind that when we have the school of business students do that, Oahu University, that issue was split literally right down the middle, that one. It wasn't like the youth red program where it's like, it's awesome, let's do it, it was like, right.
And what percentage do we need to be successful? Is it supermajority or simple majority?
I believe in this case, it would be about...
Of those who vote or of the...
Sure.
Okay.
So a dip, what other things are on the horizon that we would may need that gap to help, it's a crystal ball, Mike, I understand? That could be used also to fund other activities?
Well, I mean, no, it would be a library levy if you were to do that. As far as additional taxation levies, the only time where it would come into consideration, where you could say it's stealing from Peter and PayPal, so let's say, for instance, and I'm forgetting the rate, but there's basically a ceiling property tax rate, and if all the agencies in a specific taxing geography hit that, then junior taxing districts, other people get proportional shaves off of what they would get.
I think I worded that incorrectly, I'm sorry. Not that we put to it other levy, but other expenses to all citizens that would go up in other areas as far as water rates particularly, or funding for some of the other large issues, wastewater, stormwater issues, and I'm looking at an overall out-of-pocket expenditure for the people in college place, so that would be an offset to that, of course, if the rate, if property's going down.
Yeah, but, yeah.
And use rates are going up, you know.
Property tax is going down because of McQuarrie. As far as if you were to forecast out five to 10 years, who knows with different legislators doing, I was looking at that from the near-term area. As far as utility grades and stuff, I'm not going to lie, there definitely is a need. We met with Public Works Committee, you all saw that Capitol Facility Plan thing, there definitely is a need there. As far, I mean, I have my own opinion from the overarching spectrum of things I own it. I mean, I would say, in general, when you look at everything, else, if folks want a library card, they can go pay for it and go to either one, and technically, doing a levy costs a little bit more than that. However, I can see that there's some benefit to have any function in the city limits. I will say if you were to decide to do this, this would be the opportune time with the property tax, because I can't really forecast if you'll ever see, that isn't a common occurrence.
Hey, Mike, I didn't want to put you in a tough position there, it's just that the timing, you know, we did go through that workshop on the Capitol, and there are, there are streets to pave, and, yeah, ditches to dig, yeah.
Mr. Dickerson, what are we currently doing with citizens and library cards, do we have any activity, or do we compensate, half- compensate?
So that was our little pilot project early this year, so we did set aside $3,000 in the fiscal year 2018 budget, and that was all taken up within like the first four hours of the first business day of the fiscal year.
So what was the policy, though?
Yeah. As far as the policy, basically, folks could put in for either Rural Library District card or City of Oahu card, and then essentially, it was covered that way. I will say in talking with City of Oahu, they didn't seem all too happy with that, so if we were to continue that, it likely would just be with the Rural Library District, as they seem, even though it's adding money to their budget, I'll figure it out.
How much did we compensate citizens for?
As far as how much we compensated, it was 100%, and as far as what was in the budget, it was 3,000.
And the past history is that we've compensated 50%?
In the far past, yeah, as far as...
Actually, it was a grant from Walmart that compensated the citizens 50%.
And that was continued for a brief little bit.
Was that just kind of one-time thing, or was there another, other activity before that?
I'm not sure before that, but when...
I just remember the year 2000, 1990, 9 to 2000, and I wound up in there, it was just a city compensation of 50% directly from the city. And then we did have a, it seems like we did have a grant, yeah, from Walmart, for something, I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, it's come in and out of favor through the years, there's some years it was 50, some it was 100, there was a year I can't remember, it looked like Walmart gave money, there was, there was a year where it said that there was an unknown factor, they gave money towards the...
Well, Walmart, it was a direct payment from Walmart to, because when we got here, that's what, that's what we did.
Yeah.
That was 2005.
2005, okay.
So they, we just took our card in, and they wrote us a check back.
So, Mike, the 3,000 we burned through in the afternoon?
Yeah.
I mean, we did 100% because we didn't want to do a financial need test, let anybody walk in the door. $20,000 for a special election, if we went 50%, we don't know if that would fund the entire population if they wanted to use a library, or, we don't know, do we?
I mean, at 20, there was a guesstimate.
Right, no, yeah.
It was in GIS and census block.
Yeah, okay.
That might be a better way to sum it up.
Mr. Cleveland?
Just kind of an open question here, you mentioned potentially, if we were going to run this, it might be at the special election in April, I think you said. As far as voter turnout, I'm wondering, would it be better to wait until November, or?
I mean, there is arguments to be had both ways. I know from the voter trends, at least that I observed in Colfax typically, these special one-off issues fared better in special elections like that, and typically, when there was a general election, there was just a lot of anger in general, and it would, it would just fail.
Okay.
I tried that a couple of times, and it always ended that way, so this is something I...
So this, the special election wouldn't be looking optimal, then?
Some recent school districts were on the special election.
The people who care about it are more likely to vote.
Okay.
The special election, the ones where I've been about and essentially pushing through a resolution through council, ones that were done in a special, which I never get one of those, they don't think I would yet, but the general election, those have all gone really bad, so.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzatello.
So is the next step to put it on the council agenda, see if it goes up or down?
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'll prepare a resolution for against or for, and then however it turns out, it turns out, so at least I'm in something, and, yeah.
But we have, we have two decisions to make.
Yeah.
We have the decision whether to put forward the levy to operate, and then the decision on which system the city would use to do that.
Mr. Dickerson, is there some way we could get involvement with the community and workshops and so forth, so we can kind of get a barometer of what people are feeling rather than just seven individuals? To see if we, what kind of support we have, you know, just...
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I could think of is really an additional survey or something, because there were quite a few people at the school of business, they actually walked the neighborhoods and got random samples, so I could see if there are...
We actually did a 10% sample of the households, and the breakout was that actually, most people favored a library.
It was the...
But paying for, paying for the library was the issue.
And that was the, that's the key.
I mean, it's, it's... Because I really don't want to see it be kind of a crapshoot, you know, as to, because if there's a, you know, a 70/30 chance that it'll fail, and we could know that in advance, let's spend the money, you know, to reimburse these people for local facilities.
Well, I mean, if you will, like I could contact school of business, maybe see if we could get a refresher on that question, and then bring that in.
And what are the trends for kids and people, you know, in general, using libraries as opposed to the internet?
Yeah.
Well, one, one thing that the library does is sort of level the playing field for people who can't afford the internet, because they can get the internet at the library. And also, now it's turning into this weird flip thing where, especially in Silicon Valley, the more affluent parents are making sure that their kids have less screen time, whereas the poorer kids are getting too much screen time. So I see the library as a way, as a long-term investment in our community, just like buying the water rights for 20 years out. It's making sure that we will have the entrepreneurs and the civic leaders to be able to pave streets in 20 years, not just now. So a modern library is about a whole lot more than books. So a modern library is about a whole lot more than books.
I'm sure. So I, our household was one that got the survey and is there a way that we can have them reduce it or just focus it to really be about library and some of these questions about funding and whatever?
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe a larger sample? I mean, I don't know how much time that would take, but maybe if they're asking fewer questions, could they go to more places?
10%, 10%, a 10% sample given the sample size, gave a 95% confidence in all that the results were appropriate.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And they, they, they broke the city up so that they got, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't 10% of.
I remember all of that, I'm just wondering, like, is, are we good with that? Is that, I know that yes, the confidence rate is great.
We could do another.
I think we can go back and do another survey and focus it on libraries with a few more questions.
And can you, um, put the survey back in here for us? I know it's in here somewhere, survey.
Could you like, I don't know if you could come up with it from the university or not, give us a kind of a map of where the sample plots were?
Yeah, that was in.
In the survey.
That was on there?
Yeah.
Kind of like a, you know, when we get further along to have a copy of that provided in the information packet too.
Yep.
One thought I have here is just like if we did run another survey, um, I wonder if we could ask certain questions that might be informative, such as the city is considering, I'd say the special election in May, whether to put this on the ballot so that people would be like, oh, this is kind of a real thing. It'd be potentially informative as well as like getting their opinion on it.
The, the other thing is, is just, let's say it was approved by voters, it wouldn't be paid for by the voters, it would be paid for by the property owners, which is what, a ratio of three to one?
Any, any other questions for Mr. Rizzatello?
Capitol Construction.
Uh, I'm just going to provide a summary of this, because, uh, went through a very long, uh, presentation Friday, Public Works Committee.
Yeah, please don't resume that.
Yeah, no. Uh, so, 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 and PowerPoint, and I still have the PowerPoint, it, uh, that is converted in a book format, uh, so it has charts for every project, has a map of where said project is, uh, a lo- location map, a picture, and then there's a little blue box for each one that says what we think the split is between grants and other forms of, uh, financing. So, uh, and, uh, stuff is ranked between basically high, medium and low as far as the, the priority. So, uh, high priority is stuff we're, we're pretty much issuing for, uh, grants or needs to be done regardless. Medium is it needs to be done, but the higher priority stuff is overarching and then low tends to be either that it would be nice to have or that it's driven by speculative development, wherein essence a lot of the cost would be borne by a set developer. Uh, so it, uh, Keith, if you go to slide five, and I'm just going to leave that there because that does the priorities. Uh, so key priorities, uh, is that Southwest Couch Place wastewater trunk line and lift station, uh, total on that six and a half million, there's, uh, several grants at play. Uh, the ability to go after grants was provided this council, uh, and not only would that serve essentially wastewater for that whole development down there, but would also provide additional capacity for Meadowbrook area, seeing it view that whole, uh, Sunny Estates area and then across, uh, State Route 125, so it's also improved in our existing area. Uh, B, uh, well, number one, number two, uh, we're still dealing with the residual on that, we're pushing really hard to get the, uh, test hole, uh, put in by the end of the year, there will be a drone contract coming before this body soon. Uh, C, wastewater treatment plan, uh, just showing that we're, uh, trying to make movements, aspiring said permit conditions, uh, that would be 300,000 and really putting into play, uh, what is, uh, all that was done in that wastewater facility plan that Paul gave a presentation to a while back. Uh, C Street corridor reconstruction, uh, this is a big wild card, uh, because transportation improvement board will announce all the grants that are given out next week, so we're really going to know where stuff that go, comes out of that, uh, once they finally announce. And there's several projects in play and that's going to move around the budget, uh, a bit, depending on what we get. So C Street full corridor reconstructions by two and a half million, that's because, as you all know, street shot and then utilities underneath need replacement and it's a long segment going from, uh, Cal J Avenue to Larch. Uh, and then Lions Park renovation, uh, talk about that at length over the meetings. We have, uh, 400,000, uh, local match and then we're assembling a package from Recreation Conservation Office and several foundations and you name it to make that a reality. That'll likely be a two-year project to assemble everything, including the pond. Uh, out of the 2 million, 1.3 million is the actual renovation, 700,000 is the pond separation component. And there's a lot of other projects, please look it over on NACA, put Lauren and I'll be paying again, don't know, overall, you'd be slides.
It would, it's very well done and very thoughtful.
Yes.
Um, and I, so I very much appreciated it, but I, I feel like I remember it well enough.
It's pretty unforgettable.
Yeah, so I, I mean, a whole book of that, so please look at that over and then equipment replacement, uh, book with, that's also out there too. I mean, it looked better, so it's all out there now, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Budget update.
Uh, just please look at the, uh, documentation on that, uh, we will be on the finance committee meeting later on this week, um, and, and you'll just see the notes and all the numbers moving on to that, Sarah will be back later this week, so we'll go over that a little more at length. Uh, really the, the gaps we're dealing with, a lot of it, uh, isn't so much driven by operations, it's really the capital and, uh, that, yeah, if we get several grants, that becomes interest. And so a lot of the movement parts are on the, uh, transportation improvement board side of things, so.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello? Budget looks good, the, the operations were, were well set, well funded.
Yeah, it's really the capital side of things, because there's a, there's a local, there's always a, a local, uh, match. And with T I B, it isn't so much a local match on the roadway side that's the killer, it's just that on a lot of these corridor reconstruction projects, we have utilities underneath the Larch shop and it doesn't make any sense to all put a brand new roadway in and then have the utilities underneath blow up and then, uh, have to re, yeah, and have to redo everything. So that is where the local share is really found, it's just that if we get the grants, the local match is really within the water wastewater side of things, not so much as free, so, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Last item is, the information for you is Blue Zones. Um, the county, county health department, uh, for acute and community health, uh, brought in a representative of the Blue Zone Project, which is a, which started as a look on where do people live the longest? And they, they found five areas around the world from Okinawa to Costa Rica to, to Sicily and Greece and Loma Linda, uh, where, where the number of people living to be over 100 years of age, uh, far exceeds the, the rest of the world. And that, that's grown into a, a project coming out of Minnesota that tries to look at those nine factors that they've discovered in these areas where people live the longest and, uh, convert those into what we, what can we do within the United States, uh, to improve the quality of life in our communities? And it's not just getting people to live longer, but actually providing, uh, a community benefit. Uh, as far as that, uh, there's a, they're proposing, the Blue Zones Project is proposing a pilot visit to the county. Uh, it takes place in two days in January, uh, to take a look and see whether, whether we would be a good target for a Blue Zone Project here. Closest to us now are, interestingly enough, the Dals Oregon and Klamath Falls, Oregon. Uh, so cities of similar size in the Northwest, the state of Iowa has what, 23, I think, 23 Blue Zone Projects ongoing in the state. Uh, the largest city they just started is Fort Worth, Texas, which is a city of about 800,000. Their initial project city was Albert Lee, Minnesota. Uh, rural, agricultural, some manufacturing, uh, and what drove an interest, what drove more interest other than the, my background interest and, and what, what I finally call compressing morbidity, uh, is, is that, uh, Albert Lee essentially redeveloped based on trying to improve the quality of life and they got outside monies to come in to help redevelop their downtown and to refocus the community. Uh, the cost of the, uh, the scoping from the Blue Zones Project is $50,000. Um, at our, at the second meeting that we, that was had here over in Walla Walla University, proposal is that Adventist Health will pay $20,000 of that, uh, Walla Walla County will pay 10, city of Walla Walla will pay 10, and I volunteered us to pay 10, uh, to participate in that, to see how well, uh, we would match up.
So that's a county-wide study?
Countywide. In fact, it may run from Milton Freewater to Dayton.
Get them on, in on it too.
Well, it's, I, it's, it's, uh, now, you know, it, $50,000 is a, is a fair chunk of change and we wanted to, you know, I wanted to seed this because it, it, it has economic development potential from the standpoint of demonstrating what already is a pretty good quality of life and getting other people to invest in the kinds of things that would improve the quality of life in the community. Uh, actual costs of these Blue Zone Projects runs north of a million and a half dollars over five years. So it's, it's, it's not an inexpensive, uh, adventure, the, classically, they're financed not by government, but by health systems, uh, or, or other kind of, uh, trust kinds of institutions that put money into those kinds of things. Uh, and that's what the scoping is, it sort of starts out to look at, how do we, are, are we the kind of municipalities that would be successful at that because they've got some, uh, they have some history of success and what doesn't succeed because they've had, they've had some failures.
Is there anything online we could go to look at?
Well, there is, and I included, I included in the package, the, a, a video, but if you, if you just type in bluzones.com, there's a tremendous amount of information from the, from the Blue Zones Project on, on, on what's there and, and what's going on. Pretty impressive, uh, that, you know, like it's, Loma Linda is one of the, one of the Blue Zones, not, not surprisingly, but, but really this centers around, it's sort of looking at everything in moderation, diet, exercise, uh, social connections.
Yeah, family.
Uh, the social connections that allow people to live a longer, healthier life and, uh, and so with that, but take a look, take a look at the video, it's interesting, it's a TED Talk by one of the founders, uh, and, uh, the, the, if you go to bluzones.com, they'll, they, you, they will walk you through a great deal about that, so take a look. Probably will be, uh, the visit probably will take place in January. Uh, scoping, uh, if they think it's successful, uh, will arrange a field trip to the Dals, perhaps down to Klamath Falls. They are three, the, the Dals is three years into a Blue Zones Project, uh, Klamath Falls, I think is two. Uh, and I think fun, there may be some funding available from, uh, the state as well, based on some of the goals that deal with this. We'd be the first, the first city in the state of Wa- or the first area in the state of Washington to actually start one of these. Questions? Put it in the, we put it in the budget for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Is any of our business come before the council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I thought we couldn't make motions at this.
We can't make decisions. So move. Is there a second?